...of our citizens and their citizens vote on our actions on the agenda we asked to keep them out of cells in our home district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes. In order to provide evidence to all speakers.
It's reasonable in length. If you have more information, it can be summarized in three minutes. Please provide leave behind materials for the boards to review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as the time has elapsed. If you have questions during this session, you may ask for clarification from a school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight. Let's stand and say our pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to their beloved, for which it's made, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pause for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. We're now at a time where we have a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening's meeting. And before we do that, though, we had down at six dot one on your agenda, you'll see V S B A business honor roll. And the thought is to remove six dot one and move it up to two dot, what would become two dot six. And the other item is being pushed down to move it to two dot six. And this is, you know, another special recognition item. So is there a motion to adopt the agenda with that change? So move over motion, Mr. Rubin, is there a second? Second from Mr. Grove. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, no. And so ordered, the first thing is special recognition, V S B A regional student art contest. Dr. Binsley, can you have that one?
I do. Just want to pull up on the screen. So every year, the Virginia School Board Association can administer this contest across the state where art teachers in different schools and different grade bands select artwork that they find particularly interesting or that really stands out among peer groups. And they select those to send them up to the local level where a group of administrators and central office folks blind score them and actually send them off for local recognition. And then they have a chance to win at the regional level at the V S B A spring forum. So every year, we try to send some of those pieces of artwork and the art teachers know best what techniques were really skillful and the art that really impressed them. So even just making it to that local recognition is a really big deal. And this year, we actually had somebody placed at the regional level at the V S B A contest, which is great. That's a state recognition. So what I would like to do is just call up each student one at a time. And we are displaying the wonderful artwork over there. So you can view that as well. And we're going to give you a special certificate to recognize you for that incredible work. This contest happened back in March, but of course, everything happened with the pandemic. So we weren't able to hold this special recognition, the meeting afterwards like we normally would. So we're very happy that you were able to come out tonight and we will recognize you now. I'm just, give me a second, I'm gonna escape. The first, Ms. Valerie Cook. Thank you very much. Excellent job. Thank you so much. You're such a great artist. We're very proud. Which one was that?
She stand beside her artwork for a second. We maybe get a picture over here by the artwork in the final.
Thank you all three of you.
Stand behind it so we can see.
Stand right behind it and then we'll know exactly which ones you, thank you.
Oh, I love those colors.
Hey, can you hang out there? Can you just hang out there for a minute?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it? I don't know.
Tessellation artwork, which is incredible geometry where you have all these repeating shapes that enter your lock. Awesome. Scott Woodward, did he end up making it tonight? We'll get him his, Scott Woodward did the one on the left there. And he placed at the local level as well. And now our spring forum regional winner, Harrison King, please come up and receive your certificate. Excellent job. And if he could also be back in my job or if he didn't.
Great.
Wonderful job.
That's really interesting picture. Yeah, it's really cool.
Harrison, if I remember right, that's an abstract self portrait. Is that what the technique that you're doing is amazing? Yeah. Oh, it's incredible. The shadow of the work that you did. Well done.
Dr. Binsley, usually we hang these up in strategic places, don't we? Don't we ask them to let us have them for a while?
Well, we've had them since March, so.
I'd say we've already had them. I'm just thinking, oh no, I won't think of it. It's a look back to them.
They can have them.
See it on a Zoom session, it didn't happen, right? So.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be good to hang them.
We definitely, we have loaded on board docs, the portrait of the winning artwork. So if that's okay, but we understand if you want to hold on to.
So the next thing on our agenda, so we had, the school board has the opportunity here to accommodate someone, some business in the community for their contributions to the school system. And this year, we kicked off something called Family Futures. And it had a lot of responsibilities. And this particular year, Oakview National Bank stood up to be our fiduciary agent and to set up all of these accounts. And they gave us a great interest rate.
Yes, they did.
And of course, it's not something that's just this year, right? So it turns out it's a long term commitment, which they've also made too. We have this certificate for Oakview National Bank. Where is it, Ms. Knight? Ms. Knight, please come.
And it reads like this, Rep. County School Board expresses appreciation for your ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them.
Next one, aye.
All right, moving to our next item is the report from the school board liaison. School board liaison.
Yes.
Student, school board student liaison.
Our student liaison.
There you go.
Student liaison is student Nova Carrera, who could not be identified, she chose to do her learning via remote access. But she sent me a report and by non-student in law her, I hope she'll be reading, hopefully do a good job reading before. This is from her report. We began school with our new hybrid schedule and are now a curricular school and things have gone pretty well. Many of our students have chosen to be remote learners and I have, and that is going well too. In the last two weeks in the county, there have only been seven cases of COVID, which shows Rappahannock strength and mindfulness while handling COVID-19. With the school reopening recently, the lack of cases is fantastic news. Announcements for school updates, last day for ad drop enrollments of the high school classes was September the fourth. Sports and after school activities are postponed to the foreseeable future, though there is conditioning practice for students with athletic director acting several evenings a week. Juniors are invited to order their rings, their class rings from Johnston, with an R C H S P backpack offered as an early order incentive. Johnston's is also now taking cap and gown orders for the class of 2021, with other senior memorabilia offered to our seniors as well. Hopefully, we will have more to report next meeting as we adjust to our new schedule and find new ways to have extracurricular activities.
Hey Jimmy, could you tell us her name again?
Nova Carrera.
Nova Carrera. Yeah, got it. Thanks. I wonder if we could Zoom her in here sometime. We're gonna be like this for a while.
Yeah, we could do that.
But we'll try. Anyway, I'm not sure how it would work in here. All right, thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from the August 11th meeting? Which, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bynum. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, no. So we're, Mr. Grove, did you have opportunity to review the bills?
I did, and everything looks to be in order. We haven't spent as much as I thought we had, so we're in good shape.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I have motion, Mr. Rubin, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bynum, all in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, no. So ordered, Dr. Binsley?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. The first report of the superintendent is actually a special guest that we couldn't really announce during the public session until after the meeting. Susan Stoltzman is here to talk about the Wellness Center grant program and how that's going and all her work that since we hired her last month. So Susan, if you would like to come up to the mic. Hold on one second. Hold on. We gotta wipe it down.
That mic, if it doesn't pick up well enough, I mean, we should just get her to use one of these or some, these mics are amazing.
What happened? It was working. It wasn't working when Jimmy was there.
It was hard. I mean, Jimmy's voice carries really well, but.
Give us a testing, testing.
Hello, testing. I'm Susan Stoltzman, can.
Can you raise it up so you can hear me?
Okay, so I'm Susan Stoltzman, and I'm thrilled to be here. Feel very privileged. I've been a pediatric nurse practitioner, board certified nurse practitioner for about 35 years. I started when I was 12.
12, yes.
And I became aware of the Wellness Project by reading an article in the newspaper. And I was home from Syracuse, kind of looking for what I was gonna do next. And I got so excited with the idea that Rappahannock would do something like that at the schools. I've worked in a lot of different settings, and I have had experience in school based clinics and in community clinics. And it is just a terrific way to provide services for children in a school setting. It increases compliance, it improves continuity of care, it takes away the barrier of parents having to drive the kids somewhere, and it improves attendance. So I sent a quick email to Shannon and really didn't think I would hear back because I thought everything was all organized. And I heard back from Shannon in about 15 minutes. And so I had a phone call and an interview and now I'm on board. And just, it's been kind of a little window, three weeks, learning a lot of stuff about the county. Danny and I have lived here for a little over 10 years, but I've never participated, obviously, in the school or in providing health services in the county. So all of that was new to me. Right now, we're looking at two components. And the first one I'm going to talk about is the mental health component. We are moving forward really quickly with these services. I think that soon we'll have access to a licensed clinical social worker or a licensed professional counselor at the school. Hopefully, that would start out for a day a week and then enlarge as needed. The other really exciting thing that we should be able to put into place is telehealth, psychiatric nurse practitioner for prescribing medication. The counseling would be done face to face, the telehealth would be done, obviously, over the computer. And if anybody has any questions or wants me to go into all the details about that, I can. But it looks terrific for moving forward with that. It would take about 30 days for the campus to be licensed as a place that can provide therapy services. And there will be other things that Shannon will need to help me work out with budget and such like that. The second arm is the wellness or the medical arm. And we need a sponsoring agency for that in order for sustainability. We had hoped to involve Valley Health. It's been difficult, a lot of healthcare providers have had difficulty with the pandemic, decreasing revenues and decreasing staff. Shannon and I really hope, hoped and hope that the fact that I'm a nurse practitioner and I could provide those wellness services, so I could be a provider of those services, will hope to entice Valley Health, at least that's what we're kind of working on right now, as well as some other ideas. But we're also exploring some other potential sponsoring agencies. Unfortunately, we don't have any federally qualified health centers in the area. That is oftentimes the kind of organization that will be the umbrella for something like this. But I did my first meeting with a consulting agency today. And one of the things that they're gonna help me look into is just some other possibilities with regards to neighboring clinics neighboring to Rappahannock County. The other thing we talked about with the consulting agency is maybe tweaking the timeline of the kinds of things we're gonna look at involving the student committee in some of those consultations as well. That's really all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
She's been busy for the last.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, could you describe what telehealth is? I've never done that before.
So this is new to me too. I never thought in pediatrics there would ever be telehealth.
Right.
But it's a different world right now. So the telehealth component, and I'm not a mental health specialist, you guys, but I've gotten up to speed quickly. Apparently, it works extremely well. The way this agency does their telehealth is they have a psychiatric nurse practitioner who consults with either child psychologist or a child psychiatrist or other psychiatrist as she sees fit. And she meets quarterly to do, to start off medications, or quarterly at the school to start off medications with a student. That initial visit needs to be done with a parent for parental consent. And then the follow up is quarterly. But there is a way for parents and students to reach someone in between those quarters if they have questions before that next quarterly meeting comes up. And there's also a way that, let's say, a therapist and a student decided, we really want to start on the medication, but we don't want to wait till the next quarterly meeting. There's a way to do that as well, to start the medications a little bit sooner. So the intake, the way they're set up, there is an office person that would check a blood pressure, check a weight before that meeting on the computer with the psychiatric nurse practitioner. And so that intake, it would be just like a counseling session face to face, counseling face to face, except it would be on the computer.
Zoom meeting.
So that makes sense.
Like a Zoom meeting kind of thing?
Yeah, that's kind of like a Zoom.
But with that person, okay.
Yeah, and.
It's just on the telephone, but with the visual.
Yeah, and telehealth capacity has been building up so much in the current landscape in the medical profession, mental health. So where we had been asking for this last year, you remember we were talking, we'll take a telepsychiatrist once a month if we can get somebody. But the capacity wasn't there to do that. And now because there's been a lot of, just all these changes and having to adapt, now there's more capacity, more availability for that kind of a service. And the other piece about that, this isn't obviously having the telepsychiatrist with our licensed therapy work together, integrated, so it works together instead of all these separate pieces. That can be kind of detrimental and kind of cherry picking what you think you need at one position and the other. So this is actually working together and getting a better outcome for all the students, especially if we can house that here, whom we do have, you know, many who do need support that way, mostly the therapy work and then, you know, medications to help. But that needs to be done together and not so, you know, piecemeal.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
And one of the other advantages, we'll have to see how the pandemic goes, we'll be able to have those, be able to offer those services over the summer. Because you could, remember, there'd be no break in the continuity for the kids. So that's what they've done at the Shandale Health Clinic, and it's for that mental health process, and it's worked really well. Parents are delighted.
Anyone else?
Questions?
I see it's, there are many dimensions to what it is we would try to do, but your target is to try to do it in phases and to figure out what's the best, you know, baby step before we, right?
Yeah.
And.
With the pandemic, it's just changed the landscape of pediatric primary practice. It's kind of interesting that in the middle of a pandemic, you'd have a decrease in revenue. But that's, especially in pediatrics, that's what happened because kids, people don't want to bring their work heads in, and that's your revenue source. So I understand why Valley Health and probably many other agencies are going to be reluctant to dive in because we don't know what's coming in the fall with the pandemic and flu and all of that. So it's just kind of an odd time, but it's not an odd time to continue to explore how some of this might work post pandemic.
The timeline, yeah, so I'll start thinking, you know, what's the timeline look like? What would you pick first? I guess you're still going through those planning stages. So maybe like every month or every other month, we'll be reporting back kind of what your findings are.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Kind of chart that course, right? That's the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's good to have you on board.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your work.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Susan. And Susan is also working with the School Based Health Alliance, consulting agency that has set up all of these, so many school based wellness centers throughout the country. So that's who we brought in through our PATH grant to be able to help build our own capacity, do a feasibility study, develop a work plan that makes sense for Rappahannock. So it may be that the mental health component is the major component that we serve. And we do have that need already that we've noticed through our work with our own social worker. So building that capacity, the ability to serve mandated services, special needs students, all those pieces that have been such a struggle with so many barriers for the continuity of care. So that's what we're trying to solve. That's the immediate need right now. And then setting up the foundation for the physical health part, which hopefully will come as soon as we have more capacity. But it does help that we have our very own pediatric nurse practitioner that's helping us with that. So maybe that will make any taste of. So Susan's great.
I was just wondering one more thing about flu shots. There's usually a clinic that's hosted at the school and I just haven't heard, I know that's tangential to your work, but flu shots have been offered at school. It would be a good fall for a lot of people to get. That's through the health system, yeah. That's a separate.
I mean, yeah.
Okay.
And I know Courtney Atkins was looking into that as well to see what clinics. I know there was a need to look at the immunization records first for school attendants because we've got reports from DOE that there may be gaps in that to make sure we have all of that solidified before we hit to the, you know, flu vaccine clinics that we usually do have here. So.
Yeah, yeah, but that is.
But as soon as we know about that and what the capacity will be, we'll make sure we get the notification out.
And the reluctance for someone to be a partner is profit based?
There's many pieces. It's profit, not only that, but because there's been so many furloughs and they don't have a current staffing capability to be able to service a whole new center area to. a current staffing capability to be able to service a whole new center area to provide staffing for that, when they're barely hanging on to the staff that they currently have.
But Susan's point was, you know, here we are standing up a program, we happen to have an NP, pediatric NP, and the telehealth component. I mean, a lot of people have taken advantage of that over the last six months or five months, right? So, I mean, there's a lot of potential for us to say, come on.
There is, and we're at very, very beginning stages of that, and the consulting just came on, so as we, you know, look at all of these pieces, I'm sure we'll develop a more...
Yeah, my thought is, that would be a great advantage to families.
Definitely.
To families here, students here. So, it'd be a good target. I'm not trying to push anything, Susan, but I'm just thinking, you know, what's the greatest advantage to the families that are here in the community? And so, also for families to be moving in, that are moving in.
Yeah.
With kids.
Sure. That's such a good question of the profit. You know, if you both lose this right, Medicaid for well-child checks pays almost the same as a lot of other insurers. Sometimes they pay better. So, you're not going to get rich with a program like this, but it may, it could be very self-sustaining.
Yeah, that's my point. My point is, it can be very self-sustaining.
Right.
And a great benefit.
Yeah, it's a huge, it's a wonderful way to offer.
And so, when I said profit, I wasn't thinking that we were going to gain revenue.
No, no, no.
It wasn't stopping an organization from participating in something like this with us, and I guess there's just some risk they're not willing to take on yet. But we can do some.
I think it's, unfortunately, hit the nail on the head. The provider, but we kind of solved that with me, but the decrease in revenue, they may just not be willing to take on a new project. But I've already written Travis, and after Shannon and I talked before the meeting, I'll be writing him again. So, yeah, we'll continue to push.
I appreciate your report. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, so I'm bored quite too. This was an interesting conversation that came up with someone in the community that said, hey, we saw that, those great programs that you were going to launch this year, but I guess since everything's happened, you're probably not going to do that, huh? But you don't know us very well, do you? And so, of course, we're going to launch it, it's just going to look very different. So, I've asked Michelle Fincham and Robin Murray to come here tonight to give just a little bit of an update about the launch of our Ag Academy and our Health Science Academy and how that's going. So, who wants to start? Michelle or Robin?
Well, we're making this to do this together.
Oh, all right, Michelle. I'll bring you up first, how about that?
Everybody else was above the mic, and now I'm going to have to put it down. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm, well, hopefully, who I am, Michelle Fincham. I'm the agriculture education teacher at the high school, and I'm also teaching two blocks of the elementary school for our middle school, sixth and seventh graders, and their exploratory. Do you just want me to give like a, okay, there we go. There you go. So, this is very special to me. I don't know if it's special to you all, but just seeing this hanging up in the hallway, and even Mr. Swinler made a comment the other day of how great it is to see it in the hallway, and my best memories have been in FFA when I was in high school. So, we purchased this for, it's called a chapter banner, we purchased it for the high school, so that way when we go to competitions, hopefully in the future, when we're not, end of this pandemic, because many, unfortunately, the career development events or CDEs are all virtual, as well as the national convention that's coming up and FFA week, which will be in February. So, it's hard to promote such a hands-on organization the way we have to right now, but we're playing, we have a lot of ideas in mind, and these aren't ideas that I came up with, these are ideas that the students have come up with at the high school level that really want to be part of this organization, whether it's virtual or not, they're gung-ho about it, they want to do it. They keep asking me, when are we going to have officer elections, which we're going to start those next week? And then we're going to start, hopefully, planning chapter meetings and planning for fundraiser activities. But I will say, the amount of support that I have received from RCPS has been incredible, especially from the administration at the high school level, Mr. Swinler, Ms. Sandborn, they've been wonderful with kind of allowing me to do certain things, like having tons of guest speakers and extended class trips where I can take the students out to the farm and actually get them involved in hands-on activities. The community also has been wonderful. The few members that I have reached out to in the community, including Dr. Massey, have been very, very supportive. He's actually gone, has taken on his own accord to reach out to some of his clients to see if we can come do farm trips to their facilities. So, I have one of those set up, it's going to be working sheep, so the students will actually get to go out there, trim feet, learn about husbandry, how to properly restrain a sheep, and you'd be surprised how excited, or how excited they are. So, and I have a problem, like I'll stutter with these masks on, so just ignore me. I don't know why that happens, it's like my lips get caught, I don't know. So, we can keep going. These are the certifications available for the Small Animal Care course. There's quite a few of them. So, not all of them, obviously, are, they're going to be able to get certified in this year, because some of these pertain to the Small Animal Two course, so they follow up with each other. And we've decided, I've decided, from a veterinary standpoint, that I would like to offer Small Animal Care One and then jump right into Vet One and Vet Two. And my reasoning for that is Small Animal Two and Vet One are almost the same thing. And I am all about veterinary science, and most of these certifications they will get, but the big one is the Certified Veterinary Assistant. That is going to be offered during Vet Two, they'll actually get a certificate, and when they get to apply for a job at a veterinary hospital, they can put this on their resume, and it's huge. As somebody that used to hire for a veterinary clinic, and I did it for many years, I also trained a lot of staff members, one of which was my guest speaker today at the high school, if I sell that on a resume, I would hire that person over somebody that had no experience any day, because with my background, being a licensed vet tech, and being able to train them in just terminology and how properly restrain an animal and not let the veterinarian get bit or attacked is huge. And that's our main goal, is not to let the person above us get hurt. So, that is a lot to me, and also the pet sitter certification, because some of these students are younger. I mean, I've got anywhere from ninth grade to seniors, and the ninth graders are a little bit too young to volunteer at the vet clinic, they have to be a certain age to be able to be around the radiology equipment. So, they can get their pet sitter certification, and I don't know if you all have wrapped that, I'm sure you do, but you see things all the time on there, looking for pet sitters and people with experience, and this is something that they can do at the high school level, almost like they can get, you know, a babysitter certification, where they learn CPR, they learn first aid, basically how to triage something until the veterinarian can get there. So, the, actually, the two academies really go hand in hand together, so it's nice actually being in the same room. It's kind of neat. So, those are just some. And then, a lot of them are the same for the Introduction to Animal Systems course. Now, the third one down, the Beef Quality Assurance. That is, I am BQA certified, I got my certification, as well as my Artificial Semination Certification while I was at Virginia Tech. So, in order to, for them to get this examination, they have to be trained by somebody that's already certified, and this means that they learn how to properly give a vaccination to a cow, I'm just using cow, a bovine, in the correct spot in the neck, and not damage any of the main cuts of meat. Okay, so when they take these cattle to market, a lot of times, they will put on the little synopsis or whatever that goes with the cows when they come into the auction lot, hey, these cattle have been vaccinated by a BQA certified person, they have this, 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 and this, and it actually can increase their, you know, cent per pound. So, that's pretty big, too. It's not hard, and they have this nifty little cow head, it's like, it's expensive, but I'd love to have it. It's kind of a, it's got like all the veins, like the jugular vein, arteries, and the students can actually go up with an injection and mimic vaccinating these cattle, where they don't have to do it on a real cow, because, you know. But anyway, I'm just throwing it out there that I'd maybe like to have that big cow head. It's pretty cool. And then, of course, their Workplace Readiness Skills, okay? That is, all of the CT teachers try to embed that into their curriculum, especially with FFA. I teach leadership, how to speak in front of people and be confident. We're learning how to do extemporaneous public speaking, which is where you're given a topic and you have to come up with a five-minute speech right off the top of your hat. And I would also like to put together a parliamentary procedure team as a CDE, where they learn how to properly execute a meeting, like you all do, using Robert's Rule of Order. Now, that was big with FFA when I was in high school, it's a lot of fun, and I would like to compete in that. And I'd also like to put together a few judging teams, whether it's horses, rabbits, sheep poultry, whatever these students want to do, I would like to facilitate as much as possible, even if it's virtually, which is, that's how they're offering these livestock judging competitions. I did horse judging down at Virginia Tech, and it was a lot of fun, and I placed first in the state, and just being able to bring that back to your chapter is huge. I went to West Virginia this past weekend, and the lady that I met with had an FFA t-shirt on, said Morefield FFA Chapter. And FFA is huge in West Virginia, and I really want to do this for Rabbinah. It takes a lot of enthusiasm, it takes a lot of support, and I have that with Rabbinah, so I think we can really blow the style of water with FFA, but it's going to be different. It's not going to be your, you know, it's going to be atypical FFA almost, if I can be, I know, I talk a lot. So, our Introduction to Animal Systems, this was our enrollment for fall semester. We have thirteen students total, it's not bad, and in Small Animal Care, we have seventeen. Small Animal is a very popular course. In fact, next semester, I'm having to teach two blocks, because we have so many students that are interested in it, and I wanted to make sure we offered it, so the high school, Ms. Pond, she was wonderful, too, I mean, I know, just keep talking about them, made it to where I could teach the two blocks and get them through, because these students are going to be my, how do I put this? They're my backbone, okay? So, they're going to come into Vet One and Vet Two, and I want to make sure that they're offered, you know, they can take these courses, because my Vet One and Vet Two is, I really want that to happen. Spring enrollment is twenty-seven students with agriculture education classes, the max you can have in the classroom is only twenty, so we had to split them, and with the pandemic, we don't know what's going, you know, what's going to happen in the future, so it's better to keep the numbers smaller. Agriculture Science Eight. Now, I can't really take credit for this. This was actually Ms. Pond's idea, was to offer the eighth graders an agriculture education class, and I ran with it, because I thought it was great to get them involved in an earlier age. And with that, we, with me teaching, I'm co-teaching with Ms. Sarah Moore, the Farm-to-Table class here at the elementary school, and we're incorporating FFA into the curriculum at the middle school level, and that's where it needs to start. It really does. Like, there almost needs to be a middle school chapter for sixth and seventh graders, so when they come to the high school, they know the FFA history, they know the basics, they're ready to go, we can start competing. I've talked to Ms. Moore, and she's actually willing to maybe look into that and be an FFA advisor for the middle school, because next semester I won't be over here. And my middle school kids are doing avian embryology, because we had to think of something they could do quickly and have an outcome, but they're actually doing a supervised agriculture experience, just like my high school students, so an SAE, where they have to put together a proposal, a budget, a plan, and how they're going to raise these chicks, how much it's going to cost, and what they're going to do with the chicks afterwards. We even have adoption papers, it's pretty neat. We're doing this right here in the school, but in fact, they're in the incubator as I speak, we put them in this morning, you'll see pictures at the end of this, and the students love it. Anything that they can get their hands on, they're, they're up for it, even if they've done it a ton, they still want to do it. So, for spring enrollment, we have twenty students enroll coming into Agriculture Science Eight. We're going to be offering Agriculture Science Eight and then Small Animal One two times, so we're not going to be offering Intro in the spring, and then hopefully in the fall, we'll be offering our first Vet One class. And that's going to be all medical-based, where they're going to be doing pharmacology, parasitology, you name it, they're going to do it, especially if I'm teaching it, because I'm going to kind of teach them everything I know. This was my guest speaker today, I've got quite a few lined up, because we're doing large animal and small animal industry right now, so I thought it was important for them to get a broad overview of the different careers that's available to them besides just being a veterinarian. This is Ms. Wood, she was actually, she's a veterinary assistant, I trained her at Rosehill, I hired her and trained her, and watching her talk to my students today was, was something, it was really neat, because she has grown so much from the time she came into Rosehill not knowing anything. She had no experience, no background, and she's blossomed into this wonderful veterinary assistant, who also works with For the Cat's Sake here at Rabbinah. And this is a little kitten, you see its little bandage on the foot, the students actually helped her re-bandage the foot, and this little kitten's name is Callie, and she was in a feral cat colony, they tracked them, something towards foot, and they, she's been working with this kitten ever since. So, I also zoomed this live for my virtual students, so they could also be a part of the guest speaker, and it's recorded. And this, there's a bunch of pictures, so. And this is Benjamin Button, he had an umbilical infection, this little kitten here, these are my high school students, who are wonderful, and they're just fast asleep. It's good therapy, too, the animals are great therapy. This, the, what you see here on the smart TV in the background, well, it was a slide I put together, a picture she sent to me, so these students could see, even though it's not always fun, what you see in veterinary medicine and what you see working a rescue. So, now, everybody asks me what these stuffed dogs are for, so I figured I'd go ahead and just put them up here. These stuffed dogs are to teach proper restraint and how to bandage without putting them on a live animal, until I feel comfortable that they know how to restrain them and how to work their hands. So, that's what these stuffed dogs are for. Just trying to give you an overview of the classroom. This is Peter Rabbit, he's everybody's favorite, he owns the classroom, he's the king of the classroom, so he had to be in there. And also, we're doing digital, interactive digital notebooks, so they are going to have a notebook for animal science, vet science, and small animal, and FFA, where they can put items into the notebook and keep it throughout their curriculum. They build on it. This was what we call a rat emergency, I'm not kidding. So, the other day, I, we had a guest speaker talking about FFA, and believe it or not, I happened just to walk around the room, and I went over to the rat, and he was breathing, really labored, and I'm like, well, that's not good. So, then I had the students go, but I didn't tell them anything, I said, go, tell me what you hear. Both girls said, oh, my goodness, Ms. Fincham, they're breathing really heavy, what do we do? And I said, well, why do you think they're breathing heavy? And they're like, well, maybe they had pneumonia. Rats are really predisposed to UAs or upper respiratory, it doesn't mean anything happened to cause it, it just happens. So, we made an oxygen chamber, and I went and I borrowed some oxygen from the school, and of course, we would never reuse that tube, but we saved the rats' life. They did, I had them do it, I had them do everything, I mean, because, and they loved it.
Oh, cool.
The rats are still alive. Good job. These are some anatomy models that we got for the classroom, that the students will put together when we get to that part. That's Russell, that's my chihuahua, they're learning how to hold for a nail trim, which is really important, and they love him. He comes to school every once in a while. Obviously, the look on his face, he's not really excited about it. And of course, this is a proper restraint, just holding for an examination, which she's demonstrating here. And you'd be surprised how many people that get into the workforce and don't know how to do this. And they're going to be, and these are just some pictures of the animals, they're doing their work, and they're just kind of holding them, and right now, she's, and these are the, you can keep going.
Okay.
And we put the eggs in this morning, they're putting the eggs in the incubator for their seventh grade SAE project, and all the high schoolers will also be required to do an SAE experience, too. This was kind of Sarah's thing, but this, they're doing farm-to-table, so they're planting seeds, these are our sixth graders, they're getting their... planting seeds, these are our sixth graders, they're getting their, um, their raised beds ready in the courtyard, and they love this, they love being outside.
Great.
And more pictures of them gardening. And that's all I have, because I can talk a lot.
Thank you so much, Michelle, are there any questions about our Ag Academy? It's been a very successful launch and obviously the kids are very interested, so. Um, and when we say that enrollment, remember, that's not all in one time, they're spread out on A days, B days, so.
Yes, wanted to point that out.
Really cool.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, good, that means I did my job.
You covered it.
All right.
And now Ms. Robin Murray from RAP-C.
Amy.
Hello, everyone, my name is Robin Murray and I am the Healthcare Program Director at RAP Center for Education. Um, and we started last year with a conversation with Shannon and she said, we're going to start this academy for Ag and we would love to do a healthcare academy. At the time, we were already teaching um, nurse aid for you guys, um, and it was an easy transition, so we were really excited. We started looking at models with Danny Pond and looking at how we could make this work. So we originally made two uh, models for the students in high school. The first model is the accelerated track and by the time these students finish, starting in ninth grade, they will actually finish with four certificates. They will have nurse aid, they will have certified medication, eh, uh, I'm sorry, certified medical assistant, um, certified phlebotomy tech, and certified EKG tech, so four certificates. We did this as a um, kind of a pilot program this past spring, and you guys have two high school seniors that finished, finished with nurse aid, phlebotomy tech, and uh, medical assistant. So um, we were so proud of them, it gave us the opportunity to see if this pilot, if this would work, um, and it did, so we're excited about that. The um, workforce track that we came up with are students that might not be sure if they're going to go to the collegiate level or what they're going to do yet, so they would just do nurse aid and medication aid. So they would end with two certificates and be able to go into the medical field. You can go to the next slide. So for enrollment, um, we also have a health science eight, I'll talk about that, Dani came up with that, she was excited. Um, but for health science eight, um, that's, I actually put the wrong number, I'm sorry, there is eleven, I always forget one of my virtual guys. So I have As and B group, and then I have two students that are hundred percent virtual. Um, I said for the eighth grade class, I could make virtual work, and they are required to log on to Zoom every single day during class period. And it doesn't matter if they're virtual, if they're A students or they're B students. The healthcare field is a very hands-on field, it's very full of um, the importance of communication and right now, there's um, no better time to start this as a project for RAP schools. So um, we have the eighth grade class, our nurse aid students, we have um, eight currently, and if you want to go to the next slide. For the spring semester, Mr. Swimmer, we're only out of room, because we also have twenty-seven enrolled for the spring semester, so we're trying to figure out where we're going to put everybody because of our classroom, we'll both be there three blocks, so that's exciting. Um, but Dani came to us and she said, uh, what if we do health science eight for eighth graders and they can see what this is all about? And you guys may know or may not, the Virginia regs for Virginia Department of Education now is every student that ends high school as a graduate has to have CPR in their first aid. And so with that, we are piloting this eighth grade class, that just like all of my other classes, you're going to learn the material and at the end, you're going to have a certified test. So all of these eighth grade students, their final exam with me is going to be the certification for CPR and first aid. So that sets them up, and the curriculum that I'm using is actually the forty-hour home health um, aid curriculum, which is really exciting for Rappahannock with the healthcare needs that are in the county. These students will be able to go help grandma, they will be able to go help a neighbor, so they're going to be certified in enough of the basic skills that as an eighth grader, they will be able to go into this. So it's really exciting, um, I talked to these students just like they're adults, I told them the very first day, I'm going to treat you like an adult and I'm going to treat you like a professional, even though you're an eighth grader. So they kind of went, whoa, and I was like, we're going to have a lot of fun, so um, yeah, so in the course, the students will experience hands-on, they're going to get first aid and CPR and the health science eight, and we are also going to have several guest speakers, whether that be on Zoom, or in person, we're hoping in person, um, in fire and emergency management, um, nursing, childcare, and being prepared, how to help family and friends. And the wonderful Kathy Grove, very Grove's significant other, um, well, you know, used to teach eighth graders and she helped me build this whole curriculum together and we, we really had fun building it. So it's going to really give these students the opportunity to decide, do you want to go and become a doctor or do you want to go into fire and rescue? It's going to give them so many opportunities to look at, so we're excited about that. You can go to the next slide. So, um, Virginia Board of Nursing is our nurse aid class, these students, we have been busy. Um, if you've been in the school systems, I know Mr. Swimmer sees me, I think in the hall more than he sees me in the classroom, I promise, in healthcare, you're being safe. Um, we are wearing our masks and I tell my students, we are the role models for healthcare right now. So um, we have been doing experiments in the hall, checking and make sure that um, bathrooms are clean, checking to make sure door handles are wiped down, um, we have germ oil, we go through the school and check it all, um, so they have loved that as an experiment. We have taught them how to wash their hands, that's my goal by the end of this, is to teach everyone how to just wash their hands. Um, so, and we've had a great time, if you see in the background of that one picture, that's uh, Bertha, so we have humans and animals in the classroom, it's great, so Bertha is our patient and everybody got to name her this semester, so they really enjoyed that. We talked about the accelerated track and the workforce track, but I wanted to give you guys kind of a timeline to see what that looks like. Every August, we'll start nurse aid and health science eight, we'll go through the semester, and then in January, we'll do CCMA, certified phlebotomy tech, certified EKG tech, it'll be the same class, one will be the first nine weeks, one will be the second. And then every June and July, they'll have state testing, which we actually have the capability of doing in the school system and hiring a factor to come in, so they can actually learn here, test here, work here, grow here, it's exciting for staying here. So, um, I think that's all I have, any questions? Yeah?
Hey, Robin, you should warn people that the parents, that if their child takes part in your phlebotomy class, that they probably are going to get stuck.
Um, so, so just so everybody knows.
I was uh, married to one of Robin's students, I'm a pleasure there, uh, to practice.
Yeah, so, and, and everybody will be happy to know that I have decided that I never want to relive virtual phlebotomy.
Oh.
That was interesting. So I have literally, my, my students actually do not have any um, handwritten tests, the first six weeks, we are doing all skills. So we're front-loading the skills, whereas normally we do them at the end of the semester, I'm front-loading the skills just in case, um, we have to go into virtual learning, so.
Oh, good point, yeah.
So, yeah, that's, that's.
Good work. Any questions?
And you continue, I know, I know there was discussion of, because I have, I sit at the kitchen table and listen to this stuff. The, the ten students, or twelve students, uh, in the eighth grade class, and my understanding is that all twelve are going through their As and then they come back to their Bs, they do that virtually, but everybody's doing the.
Everybody's doing the same thing at the same time.
So you're not, you're not doubling, you're not re-teaching on Thursday what you taught on Monday, you're just going straight through.
Right.
Which I think is a phenomenal way.
Yeah, it, at first I did my calendar where it was two calendars, A calendar and B calendar, and I was doing everything twice a week. And I said, you know, in healthcare, you have to show up, there is no days off. And so, why not teach them now that they have to be on Zoom? And I only make, for the eighth graders, they only have to attend Zoom for thirty minutes, but they have to be on, if they're not on, I've already talked to guidance, it's an absence for me. Um, and that's really important, I think, to teach them in the very beginning, so we are, we're, they're logged on, we do the videos, they see their classmates do it, and we actually have more males than females in the eighth grade class, so I'm pretty excited about that. So it's, it's good to see these guys really engaged and excited to learn, so, yeah.
Great, thank you, Robin.
Thank you so much. Just love the enthusiasm of these ladies. I was brought up at our board of supervisors meeting actually, the, last week, and how um, talking to teachers in the schools and, you know, we have a parent that's also on the board and other parents we've spoken to and just that enthusiasm with which the teachers welcome their students back, especially with such a new program under such stressful situations and they're still, you know, just embracing and enthusiastic about the work that they're doing, and that's the passion we have in Rappahannock, which I love so much, and, you know, I appreciate you ladies, thank you. Speaking of passion, the Rappahannock Kids Coalition is a new group in Rappahannock that just kind of came together with a common need over the summer when everything was canceled. All the summer camps got canceled, including the one we had designed ourselves too, and um, there was just such a need that was um, spoken out about, um, from our uh, DSS director, who said, look, we are foreseeing more issues, more depression, more anxiety, more CPS reports, more dangerous situations for kids in social isolation due to the closure, and this summer would be a great time to do something where we can be outdoors and we can do distanced um, activities. So at this time, I'd like to invite members of the Rappahannock Kids Coalition to come and talk about the summer camp program and how that sort of rolled into our wonderful Wednesday program that we're going to start here in a couple of weeks. Who wants to start us off? Eve Brooks?
I'm going, and Gary will follow.
Dr. Rinsley made a very good introduction of why we started. There is a behavioral health coalition, uh, it's called the Roundtable that meets every month, and in that uh, discussion, we all decided that we were really playing with fire if we didn't find some way of serving kids this summer, and we thought that there was enough distance if we could do things outdoors. Um, so, it took off in May, we, late May, we started planning and by June, we were putting out recruitment. Now, we had a lot of help. Uh, I'll go through who we are, but I wanted to first say, the biggest help was having the school district. No group from the community could have managed to establish three summer camps and ma, and handle the administration, the complexity of food, the transportation issues, all of which were a breeze because of Jenny Capsa, who was led to us to help plan, and the wonderful open, uh, excited partnership we had with the school district. This is exceptional, um, and, and I just cannot say enough about the spirit of this community that came forth because of the leadership of the school district, the quiet leadership, the, okay, yes, we can do that and we can do this, yes, we can make it possible. So what did it make possible? It made possible, and you have a full report, um, three day camps this summer, um, they structured high, pretty high quality, given the time we had to prepare, uh, activities for kids. Two of them were two days a week for kids, um, one was the uh, Summer in the Park Program, uh, had managed, again, at the last moment, headquarters came in with the staffing to manage a program, I mean, this is amazing to me. We used the existing and well-trained staff at Flori Center and basically enabled them to have an active program when they would have been dead in the water this summer. And third, uh, with the Mental Health Association's help, put together a very fine adventure camp program at Redon, which was one week, was solid for twenty-three kids. So, who benefited? The teens benefited, the young people who served as counselors and got paid benefited, a hundred children benefited, most of them eleven and under, but ten who were over, uh, who were teenagers. Um, and I think the community benefit, um, the thirty adults who contributed their talents felt useful in this summer, that nobody felt useful, people were either just sitting at home. And so it gave everybody something, a feeling of hope and engagement, um, in this pandemic I, I want to just speak a little bit more about the many people that were involved and the many resources, and I have to particularly mention Ruth Welch, who uh, is on the park board, and, and this is the first time that little park, which has become a real gem, uh, was used fully. But uh, she pulled together thirty volunteers, and those volunteers came from, um, old rag naturalists, friends of RAP, Rappahannock River, uh, Northern P-9 Community Foundation, not a volunteer, helped fund it, uh, the Good Life Theater, uh, Audubon Wildlife Sanctuary, RAP, which, please, a couple of volunteers, uh, who would have otherwise been volunteers, artists to provide classes, to provide music, class, uh, classes, um, the old rag, man, master naturalist, friends, uh, basically, a variety of people who have not been brought together in this way, all came together to work with kids last summer. Uh, and again, I want to say particularly how headquarters came in, to move forward and, and run a camp, uh, unprepared. It wasn't on their agenda, they got the money, and Gary can talk more about that. I hope from this that we all have learned how important that collaborate, how important the collaboration is, uh, and how exceptional our community is when we collaborate, and we look forward to doing it again on wonderful Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Gary?
Yeah? Amy?
What?
You've got, you've got a feel, fully vigilant.
Maybe I don't.
There we go.
I want to say again for, I want Eve to say, thank you so much. It wasn't during the school year, but they're your kids, they're our kids, and you owe us Shannon's leadership and enthusiasm and, and you, you gave us some adjournance time and that's just two, there are probably half a dozen more people who are typically on school payroll who just said, sure, whether it was helping with the lunch, whether it was helping with accounting, whether it was helping with, you need to go get your supplies from these people because they're the best ones, I mean, and you guys took the labor of responsibility, which no one else in the community really was able to do. So without your support, the contribution of your staff and your leadership, this couldn't have happened. So while we're excited as the RAP Kids Coalition, uh, don't think for a minute we're not aware of, of how much we depended on the school and your people to make this happen. Having said that, I'm not going to go into details, you've got a pretty good report and I know you're all vigilant, you, some of you, you won't call out any. And I know you're all vigilant. Some of you, I won't call out any of my name, but Larry, for example, I know he'll check every, every page and read it two or three times. But let's, let's tick off some of the wins. Let's start with the money. Without the coalition, without your support, we would have been thousands of dollars that didn't in fact expect to have kids that were not flat and spent. And a chunk of that, a big chunk of that was private money. We shouldn't forget that. When there's something broken on the line, especially if the school enforces it, we can find some money that otherwise we wouldn't have access to. Second, there were people who jumped in on this one. Again, without sort of the momentum, the credibility, the legitimacy of this, we couldn't have talked to people like some of the park commissioners and said, no, we can't open those bathrooms. We're just sorry. We want to. But with COVID, well, guess what? They did. We found a way to make that work. We couldn't have done it any one of us alone, but together we could. The kids, the collection of kids, and almost more importantly, even people who didn't have kids. This was a bleak summer for virtually everyone, grandparents, neighbors, friends. Everybody was looking at these kids, and the kids were not happy. Just the fact that this community said, we understand, we can do something for everyone, but what we can do, we will do, and we'll try and do it in a way that everyone's safe. And we did. That brings me to our last point. When we started, you realize the reason we started was because everyone said, you can't do this. There's no way to bring these kids together and keep them safe, not with COVID. Some of us knew that if that was the community attitude, you'd rather get school open. And so when we said, you know what? We can't promise risk elimination, but we will promise risk litigation, and we will do everything and beyond everything that any health profession tells us we need to do in order to try and keep these kids safe. I believe that not a single child had a serious injury accident or got sick during July, as are some of these camps. We learned the protocols. I'll tell you, social distancing for little kids, we learned still. It doesn't be done so much that we can kick in the door three or five times and get with the program, and they do. But when the little kids have been all locked up and you put them in a playground, they tell you not to touch anyone anyways, a second grader. So it took a while, but like any other learned skill, we learned that you could do this. And I'd like to think that part of what the success of the summer program showed was that with adequate planning and diligence and supervision and seriousness, you go over to school and have kids in class, on campus, safely. And we all continue to hope that every week, every month, we continue to prove we can eliminate the risk, but we can mitigate it against the other hazards. It's not as if keeping children locked up at home is risk-free. That has its own set of long-term, serious, no health and physical health and social health consequences. So we're always wary of what is the best, the optimal outcome. I think this summer we got close against some priest stiff odds. And I'd like to think that that helped us learn as a community how to get kids back to school. So thank you again for that. It also led you to, by the way, I think partly, it's attributable to the coalition, we're going to school together, and the summer program, that the supervisors last week decided, of all kids' requests that they hold over, as they probably should have, it's a serious, complicated thing we're looking at. But they did pull out one item to fund last week so we could get started. And that was for the Wednesday program. It's hard to say. I can't stand here and tell you it was because of the success of the summer program or the coalition. But I do think there was an energy and positive momentum going into the school year that might not have been there otherwise. And I'm just thrilled. They're loving learning on the Wednesday program, and we're looking forward to helping further with an after-school program and one beyond that, even an enrichment module that would be outside of the school throughout the coming school year. So thank you again for your support. We couldn't have done it without you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
It's a great program. It's a great testament of our community and how they pull together. Great offering. Thank you all, and thanks for coming in and reminding us of that.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. And the wonderful Wednesday Day Camp flyer is on board, Doc. So if you're interested in passing along that information to anybody who wants to register, I'll have to give that plug for Ms. Jenny Kapsa. Space is limited, and registration ends September thirteenth, just a few days away. So we need to make sure we get that going. We don't want to lose the Wednesdays we have. We, of course, will keep it rolling because I anticipate that once it gets going, the first Wednesday, everyone will be talking about it. Oh, can I please get in? Can I please get in? So, but please get that in as soon as possible. Any questions about the summer camps or Wonderful Wednesday?
It was a great accomplishment. Fantastic.
We're thrilled, and it's, it was awesome to see the, the whole community supporting this effort. There's a lot of working families who have come out and spoken to their representatives and said, I don't know what I'm going to do. What are we going to do? We understand you can't open every single day for all kids, but what are we going to do? And everyone really was problem-solving that issue and providing all these supports for children together. And there's not a day where we don't have some alternative option. And I think we only had, at the end of the day, nine families who weren't served that, for whatever reason, didn't absolutely need it. They had another way to do it, but we provided other options with expansion of CCLC to provide additional daycare in our building where we were not utilizing space, with a grant-funded Redon Day Camp as well. And now the Wednesday program's happening, so a lot of different options. So I'm just thrilled with that effort that this amazing small community could accomplish in such a short time. So thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
All right, so reopening update. Every month, we'll keep this as a standing agenda item. And of course, we did receive a little bit of confusion with our calendar that had the color coding up through September because we said, we only had two weeks. So there's definitely not going to be a change to the model at all at this point in time. So we did just update the color coding on the calendar, so it does not require board action. But that is there for everyone to be able to print out a new one. And we ran it through the entire semester, so everyone can see that. And just, I don't anticipate a change anytime soon. We will accumulate more health data, local district, school data, and make that determination. But the revised calendar is now updated. So how are we doing? I do have the local health data information straight off the press from the Department of Health today, actually. So I can give you some figures and numbers. Virginia overall is looking really good. Let's see if this will come up. Here's just a rundown of the jurisdiction here. And as you can see, Virginia is actually on the much lower end of some of those leading states for a number of deaths and cases. So the strategies in Virginia seem to be working pretty well. From the community burden trend data that ended on the fifth of September, in Northern Virginia, we're actually at low community transmission levels in low burden area, whereas some are at different levels. And this is a dashboard that's not accessible to the public. It's not the same as the Department of Health dashboard that you see as soon as you go on. This is only disseminated by the health directors after they have explained it to some of the leaders in different localities. So this is what they call an overall community burden, which kind of combines case incidences, percent positivity, the tax, the community transmission rates, the healthcare workers, and I think hospital, community bed capacity, and all of those things into an overall community burden and transmission risk level, which really helps you determine in your communities and your regions what are the best decisions you can make with your organizations. And schools are, that's very important for schools as well. So the pandemic dashboard here by locality, Rappahannock's looking really great as far as the percent positivity. Our whole Rappahannock, and this is the Rappahannock Rapidan Health District. Okay, so that is comprised of Culpeper, Fogg, here, Madison, Orange, and Rappahannock. So you can compare us a little bit with the, the region. So looking very good as far as positivity rates. No, the outbreak rate, although increasing in some of these localities, has not hit the fourteen-day trend mark, so it's not reportable. So we know in two communities that we've had that in the home health centers. So I'm sure that'll jump up. But Rappahannock, no outbreak. So that's the data right now, so we're very pleased. We know right now we made the, the right decision to open the model that we have. It really proved well in the first week of school where we had a positive case that happened outside of our control. It was a testing incident that was waiting for report back. So we've tried to do a lot of education on that. But the, the level of containment was impressive. So it showed that we could maintain our opening plan. We could resume businesses as usual. And the Wednesday in the middle really helped us be able to sanitize effectively the distancing that has been happening in the classrooms, led the Department of Health to make the recommendation that we do not close, and that the contact tracing went very, very well. So that's attributed to so much of the work that Courtney Atkins did as our COVID team leader and put together such a solid plan where it was pretty clear that we were at such a low, low risk for transmission. And that makes me feel better, too, about what we're doing. But at this time, I'm not making any recommendation that we change. We think this model is working really well. We want to keep it working well. And we've only been open for two weeks. So, you know, we want to see, over the course of six to eight weeks at least, look at that data, and especially as flu season comes upon us and where we, generally in any virus, we will see a spike where flu season starts. So we just want to watch that very carefully and make sure we're doing everything we can. Some pieces that we were very thrilled to report were the, was the level of compliance. We expected that from teachers, of course, but from the kids. So I think it really means that the, you know, parents, for the most part, are really speaking to their children, and they helped with the masks. We're getting such good compliance with that. The hallways, walking in the hallways appropriately, distancing the classrooms. Even some students telling us how to make it even a little better in some classes and things like that. So, yeah, I think everyone's on board, and it's been very positive. Instructionally, we are still at very new stages with the launch and implementation of Canvas. For those who have started in grade six through twelve, it's been going very, very well, from what I've heard, and it is all new again. So I think we, a big part of this was offering as much support as we could. And you'll read in our newsletter here that part of that was setting up a remote learning support team. And that consists of teachers who were very comfortable. Some of our dual enrollment teachers have already been using Canvas, and we're very comfortable with it. Some teachers just, you know, have been taking online courses recently, so Canvas is very natural to them already. So we have a remote learning support team that's available to help for remote learning assistance on any days because, as you know, our teachers are doing both the remote and the in-person concurrently. So they're available when the teachers may not be to assist them. And then all of the students in the high school also have a remote learning mentor on top of their teacher, too. So in order to help with, maybe I lost my login, or what do I do if I can't find this module? Or where's my calendar? What's the syllabus? You know, those types of things that they can help with. So that's been going really well, too. For our K to five, most of those classes are launching in just a couple of days, on September tenth. The K to five curriculum in Canvas through Virtual Virginia was just launched the week before school started. So in order to give our teachers a little bit more time to vet the curriculum and look through the course comments and all of that content, they did need more time, as six through twelve had been there for many years and had already been developed. So the teachers are doing well, and some launched it before that, if they felt comfortable. And we also, if you recall, we have the Teacher Leader Program, where every year we identify different needs, and we pay stipends for teachers who are, want to lead something, or principals identify a need. And this year, for K to five, it was certainly Canvas curriculum development in four, because there's such a quick turnaround. So we have several of our teachers in the primary grades that are very comfortable in going through the curriculum to create the content and the whole, can't build the Canvas course for the other teachers as well, together collaboratively, but facilitating that process. And so we've built in all of those supports. Also, we want to remind everybody that the emotional support hotline is still available. Anytime, please call that if you're feeling anxious or depressed. I know in the paper recently, there was Dr. Karchner's message about collateral damage during isolation and extended closures and things, and what that does to students and adults in particular, that even, I think he said it's tripled. Depression in adults has tripled because of the COVID. It was tripling more than the nine-eleven traumatic experience, national traumatic event. So, I mean, it's a, it's a big deal, and I apologize, I don't have that pulled up right now. But, you know, just, just pushing us to make sure. We have to learn to operate the best we can and provide the services that we can for our families because they depend on the school system to do so much for them. So as long as we can stay open, the goal is to stay open for the most students possible, as long as possible, safely. And that's what we're, we're testing out this model now. And it seems to be working really well. And I will also say that we were selected by the United States Department of Education to receive a site visit next week, highlighting our reopening plan and looking at these components. And so we're receiving a visit. I said, they said I could announce that. I asked them. So that's a really big deal, too. So the federal government's going to come in and look at how, what we've done has worked, what doesn't, to listen to us and our challenges. And they're also interested in the collaboration between the county and the school system with creative uses of CARES funding to be able to reopen a school and how that was effective. So interesting, so we're excited. Any questions for me about the reopening?
I was wondering if there's been any adjustment in terms of, very good job, this of all. Like we've been, our kids have been virtual learning, and it's been a very good experience.
Good.
Plus with Governor's School and everything. I just have to say that as a parent, thank you everybody in the school for that. And I just wondered about numbers, has there been any adjustment of two-day, four-day, or all virtual?
As we started, we did have some more that went both ways, actually. The four-day, we tried to, you know, we capped that with very specific numbers because of our capacities. And of course, we're looking at every request, case by case, with individual families, just to be sure, you know, if it doesn't impact the classroom capacity or affect those safety mitigation procedures. But the tough part is with remote learners wanting to then come in person because we, we basically built a schedule around the capacity we could handle for those. So in the current context, those are harder to accommodate. I'm not saying impossible, but they're a little bit tougher. But anyone at any time can go from four-day to two-day to remote as that won't, won't affect the health and safety plan of the school. But staying pretty stable, seventeen percent remote, and then eighty-three percent or thereabouts in person in some form or another, yeah.
If, if a family chose all virtual and had found out that that display isn't working where they live, is there a waiting list to determine whether or not they can come into a two-day program or the hybrid program?
Yes, we have a, like, this master spreadsheet that we're all looking at all the time. And we all have a different role on what we do with that sheet. But their initial step should be to, well, first, contact our tech support number. Maybe there's something we can do to expand the bandwidth or work with a provider, give you a hotspot. It depends. So, I mean, maybe start there, and then contact the school to say, look, this just isn't working. My child's not being successful because nothing we're doing, but because of the bandwidth at home is just, you know. And we'll see what we can do.
The ones I talked to just found that they don't have the bandwidth for two or three kids to be online virtually at the same time.
Yeah, I have a similar issue with three kids. And it's funny that all their Zoom meetings are at the same time. So we have, like, we were able to set up a hotspot and do something different with our home internet so that now it can be facilitated. But honestly, the problem that she leave, Dr. Bolt is awesome about trying to find a solution that's going to work for your family. So she helped me figure that out. So maybe start there first. Maybe there was something we can do for that because it's unlikely that we'll be able to accommodate a remote learner coming back into the building when we've already capped a lot of our classes. It depends.
Well, I mean, if someone leaves the hybrid, that opens up a spot if they happen to be on the same grade level.
Right. And that's why we have this big master list where we're always seeing what every kid is doing and who talked to whom, and, yeah.
Okay. I, I just say, if we can accommodate, we should. But we also have to understand that there are some limits to that accommodation.
There are. We tried to be very upfront and clear about that, especially with some of those high school courses. school courses. You know, with our remote learning agreement, it says right off front, you know, if you probably shouldn't do remote learning if you cannot provide these things and support your child in these ways because it will be difficult, you know? And that's why, and it's also a long-term commitment for the whole semester. We're asking if you, if you go that way, please make that commitment for the semester that they sign off on. But of course, there are extenuating circumstances. Something happens in the home, the internet doesn't work anymore, it got pulled, we moved, all those things, you know? Talk to us. We'll be supportive as we can, but the idea is to try to keep the model as stable as possible.
It's still the, it's still the hope that come January, we're back to a, a normal school schedule. That's still our hope.
Yeah, our hope, I mean, ideally is to get everybody back four day, maybe sooner, but, you know, it just, it really depends on how this, how this goes and how the numbers look and until we hit the fall.
Where the data leads us.
Where the data leads us, exactly. So we'll watch that very, very closely and we won't make any, any step to change it unless we know it's going to be the safest as possible.
And any other questions? Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to reports of Headwaters representative.
Hey, well, I did speak with the executive director of Headwaters today. She had a teach book about the summer programs again. I'm going to just try to log back in my computers because I do have a report, but my computer fell asleep. There was just one other good news thing from Headwaters about the Headwaters collaboration with Lord Fairfax Community College Workforce Solutions. We'd learned that they had sponsored two heavy equipment operator positions. Both of those were certified and have job offers, which is a pretty cool thing that Headwaters was collaborated with Lord Fairfax to do, to do. And there are two more students that they're looking to sponsor. So that's just a great, the breadth of Headwaters is truly, you know, to be admired and impressive. And, yeah, and the other pieces are things that Gary mentioned and in his, in his report. Just wanted to add that on.
Great value, great value to the community, great value to the school system and, and to be appreciated. Thank you very much. MDGS report?
No, no.
No, no. All right. All right, moving on to seven dot one's public comment. If you would like to address the board this evening, you can rise and come to the podium. Anybody? Gary? I should let you introduce yourself, Gary.
Since we moved into public comment, I'm Gary H. Hilton, district, and I'm here tonight on, you guessed it, behalf of Headwaters. It seems like collaboration is a theme running through tonight's comments. I just want to point out how fortunate we've been. The community, before the West End and in Call Rock Kids Coalition, the community came together to really advocate and push hard to get a full-time social work in this district. And we have Kathy Sickler. I just want you to take a minute and think what would COVID and this crisis look like without Kathy Sickler in, on the job and doing her work? What?
I don't want to imagine.
What, almost a miraculous coming together. Then Jenny Capsa, if it ever had a collaboration between two private charitable foundations in the county who funded a three-year pilot program for profiling graduate and financial illiteracy, you wouldn't have Jenny. We might not still have any in the county. I can't imagine getting through this summer without Jenny. I can't imagine us moving forward profiling graduate without Jenny Capsa. Again, another example of how together we can do things we couldn't do apart. Tonight, Susan, when will it stop? I mean, I don't want it to stop, but here we, we have this, this specialized lead at the moment and suddenly she goes right at the school, has all the credentials, all the experience, she's been in a child wellness, not with, hopefully, anybody who was a child wellness school, is moving. Now she's with us. So again, I don't want to say too much about it because I don't want to juice it, but imagine what we would be like without these key people in these key spots and all that goes back to the leadership, the vision, and the support of the board. I think as a small rural county, we have a lot to be thankful for and I think we have a lot we can be proud of. Moving forward, we were so pleased that the Board of Supervisors decided to go ahead and, and give a yes for the Wellness Wednesdays. I have all the confidence that that's going to be a great program. And again, it builds on the success of the four H program this summer. So it's not, it's not a startup, it's really a continuation anyway. Headwaters looks eagerly toward the four day after-school enrichment and remediation program, which if we can get Pat to help us and some private donors, we see that as really not childcare. It's child support at a time when they need everybody's support they can get. We will hope to build it more, more like a study hall, more support. We might use some volunteers. COVID makes everything more challenging, but we think we can find ways to make that work. And we see the after-school program Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday as a way to really help support the children and families, especially working families and those children who are at academic risk. So we're hopeful. We have conversations with the superintendent and we look forward to being able to collaborate with the school to make that happen. The third tier after Wednesday and then the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday after school is what we're calling the countywide enrichment program. We don't know how this will work yet, but we know that many students who would like to do maybe a music course or an art course or kung fu, I don't know what it could be, tennis, I don't know. But there are children who are interested in things that have more time on our hands than ever before. We have a rich array of volunteers in this community. We tapped some of that this summer. If we can find a location, Headwaters would be prepared to be the coordinator of trying to team up kids, families, and volunteers or staff. Maybe it's once a week, maybe it's once a month, but whatever it is, it's better than nothing. And so we think we can bring some of the richness of this county to bear on this crisis so that children who would otherwise be bored, perhaps getting in trouble or getting depressed, might look forward to that art lesson or that music lesson or that Raiders Theater or that, whatever it might be, gardening come spring, I, or a hike through the woods, whatever it might be, but something that gives them access to enrichment in their life. So that's our agenda for the next several months. We look forward to working with you and I just hope we can continue to be effective together. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Gary.
Hi, I'm Kathy Dutiel, Chairman of the Board of CCLC, and I didn't plan to say anything today, but since there's a public comment period, I'd just like to commend Shannon and her wonderful team for getting us through the summer and, and launching school. I really came to see how it was all working out for you, so I'm thrilled. And also want to welcome Susan, who's a girlfriend of mine, two-year-old teen, and she's so happy not to have that commute all the way to Warrenton and that. On behalf of CCLC, thank you for all the help that you've given us and on Gary's theme of collaboration. I'm hoping that we can continue to collaborate, help all the kids from zero to five at our school and then all the rest at your school. So thanks for everything.
Yeah, I'm actually glad to continue to hear the word "community" keep happening because it wasn't always like this. It was not. And so I'm happy that this school is such an integral part of the successes that you guys have had seen. I think it's a great testament to what we wanted and what's happening. So thank you. Is anybody else tonight? Great. Moving on to the new business, is there any new business tonight? Anybody? Anything? Our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is October the 13th at 6:30, and I would assume we're going to be right back here until we're in a new phase in the state. So this time, we're going to move into closed session. Mr. Grove, do you have the motion to go in closed session?
I do. I move that we will convene in closed session for the following purpose, to discuss and consider the appointment of staff for classified positions pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2 dash 3711A1.
General motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, for Ms. Bino. All favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. This note is ordered. We're going to be in closed session for five minutes, maybe 10, and then we'll be back into this room and, and conclude tonight's meeting.